Special Olympics, national banner, Unified Champion School. Under your leadership, the Carver High School staff and students have demonstrated their commitment to inclusion. Your school community has shown impressive determination and is helping us move towards our collective goal of creating a truly unified generation of young people who embrace differences and lead social change. You are literally redefining the future as you make your communities more inclusive of people with intellectual disabilities, and in doing so, making the world a more acceptable place for all. So we are excited that we, because of our Unified Sports Program, have been recognized as this Unified Champion School. So next, I'd like to actually show you a video. There's a video recognition that goes along with this from the Special Olympics. We'll start with that video, and then we'll call up the members of the team and the coaches.
Hello, my name's Tim Schrock. Hi, Bert. The chairman of Special Olympics, and it is my enormous honor to join the thousands of Special Olympics athletes, families, volunteers, and community leaders from all over the world, and congratulate you on achieving the status of Unified Champion School, on meeting the ten criteria set out to achieve this standard, and even more, for believing in the importance, the urgency, the necessity of a more inclusive and a more welcoming future for all. You've made your school a place where empathy and compassion, where grit and resilience, where inclusion is the standard by which you live and learn. You've made your classrooms into places of inclusion, your hallways, your cafeterias, your buses, your playing fields into places of inclusion. Our hope is in you, that you will build the unified generation where, once and for all, people with intellectual challenges and their non-disabled peers will see each other as equals. Equal in the sight of their country, their families, their communities, and their schools. You are Unified Champion School, and the future rests with you. Thank you for leading us forward.
So at this time, we'd like to welcome up the members, and obviously, this isn't all the members of our Unified Sports Teams, but we want to invite up the coaches, and the administrators, and the teachers, and some of our students who've been part of the team that have earned us this recognition as a national banner Unified Champion School. And I know they want to speak a little bit, and they have a presentation as well. So at this time, if we could welcome Athletic Director Michael Schultz, Mary Willett, Teacher of the Post Program, Michael Santos, Teacher of the Compass Health Program, and one of our coaches, Pam Reed, Paraprofessional in the Post Program. These are kind of our staff members who've been instrumental in the development and the running of the program. And then also, we have some of our students who've been Unified Team members. Hayden Roach, Jake Cotter, Crystal Neal, Emma Riley, Andrew Walker, and Riley Lippert are all here this evening to recognize or to be part of the recognition and talk a little bit about how Unified Sports have affected them and been a positive thing for the community. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over. I'm answering off to Mary, or to Jake. Mary first, and then to Jake.
Ladies first.
Jake, I should have caught that, Jake.
Jake is always a gentleman, always. I want to thank you for taking the time tonight to acknowledge our amazing Unified Sports Teams. On behalf of Coach Santos, Coach Reed, and myself, we are grateful for the opportunity to share the story of our team and why we were chosen as a national banner school. Unified Sports have been around for many years. In fact, Mike Schultz often speaks fondly of his time on a Unified Team while playing in college. But in 2008, the U.S. Department of Education and the Special Olympics Organization came together to form the Unified Champion School Program. They did this in order to grow the Unified Sports Programs. Knowing that team sports brings people together, they believed that starting the Unified Champion School Program would be a way to build inclusion and to break down stereotypes in an organic and natural setting. So just to give a little background, there are three models of Unified Programs: recreational, developmental, and competitive. Carver has teams that compete in all three. Our Unified Botchi Team participates on the recreational level. We have been doing this in conjunction with the wonderful Carver Middle High School Council for many years. It's a low-key, fun-filled opportunity where, once a year, we get together with a combined team in a jamboree-style competition. It brings together a lot of students from best buddies, as well as student council. As the name suggests, it is truly recreational. Our Unified Soccer Team, however, participates on the developmental level. The athletes work on skills training with members of the high school junior varsity teams prior to all games. They develop and hone skills that they will need to do during a competitive game. This is our largest team and includes students from the seventh and eighth grade, which is really great. For our many athletes, oftentimes, this is the first opportunity that they can go to away games, they can play under the lights, and just be part of a larger team. And finally, there is our Track and Field Team, which competes at a competitive level. They follow the MIA rules, and our Track and Field Team has the longest history, and it grew out of our traditional Special Olympics Team. I've been part of the Carver Special Olympics Team for 18 years, and the program was started by Deb Pamela and Suzanne Ronsky from the elementary school. There truly are no words to describe how proud I am of all the teams that we have sent to the Games, whether it be traditional or the Unified. And I believe that our athletes always live up to the Special Olympics motto, which is "Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in the attempt." We have had Carver athletes win many medals at regional and state levels. We have had Carver athletes participate in the singing of the National Anthem and the reciting of the Athlete Oath. We've even had an athlete, Paige Lawson, win the prestigious Heart of an Athlete Award in 2017. That's pretty cool. I am going to show a video in a moment, but I just really want to thank all the coaches and volunteers who have worked so hard on behalf of all the students through the years. Roger King, who really helped us with our first Unified Team compete at Boston University, as well as helping our traditional teams participate regionally. Deb Pamela, and Suzanne Ronsky, and Pam Copeland, who helped our traditional athletes for many years at the regional and state Games. The many, many, many paraprofessionals who come to the regional Games to ensure that all our athletes have the most successful day that they can, and who help organize the end-of-the-year celebrations that we've had. To the families of the athletes who come and cheer on everyone. To Mike Schultz, our Athletic Director, who has always supported our program and understood the benefits of the Unified Program. To Coach Pam Reed and Mike Santos, who truly made our Unified Team the nationally-recognized team it is. And if you don't mind, I would like to publicly thank my family, especially my children, who have had to understand that teaching is not a job that ends at 2:10, and that the things that we do after school are often, so often, the things that make us the champions that Mr. Neef spoke about at the beginning of the year when he opened up the school year. Teachers are champions of our students, and it's programs like this that solidify that. I thought it was pretty amazing that that was your topic this year, or your theme this year, and it fell so good into this. So I have a three-minute clip, if you don't mind, because picture is just so much better than the words that I can say. And then I'm going to turn it over to one of our co-captains, Mr. Jake Cotter, who's going to speak about what it means.
I can't believe that Unified, out of all Programs, this Unified has been chosen as Unified Champion School. Fun fact, I actually didn't originally want to do Unified, but then I was eventually persuaded to do it in a good way. And the first one I did was Track. It was really fun. I did Fly and Jump and Javelin. I still do it whenever Track is available. And then Soccer, I was also kind of reluctant to do. But I became assistant coach, and I became the first assistant coach ever to score a goal. I really don't think there's any other assistant coach who's done it, except me. It's really been a pleasure to work with amazing people, my teammates. They've always been incredible to work with, to watch, grow, to play with, to get to know a little better. But also, Ms. Willett, Ms. Reed, Mr. Santos, Mr. Schultz, for making this happen, always being behind us, cheering for us, motivating us to do our best. You guys are the true champions, because you move us to win. And to me, Unified means people being there for you. I mean, I love winning the gold. I love getting the gold medal. But really, Unified is just fun when your friends are there, and when there are people supporting you, and when your family is there. And it's just been so incredible to do this, and I'm looking forward to Soccer in the Fall.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I don't know if, I will say that there is...
Follow that.
Yeah. As part of the recognition, there is a banner. So the school district will be receiving a banner that we're going to obviously proudly display in the gym with all our other banners and championships. And I thought, but we haven't actually, we haven't decided what we're going to do in terms of a ceremony for unveiling the banner, but obviously, once we do that, we'll do that. Most of, you know, my thought would be, I haven't spoken to Ms. Holly or Mr. Schultz yet, and my thought, we would do that in front of the students of the school, whether that be at a pep rally or a public event, where we would unfurl the banner and recognize all our students who've been involved in Unified Sports, because I do think it's just been a tremendous opportunity for all of our students, and a great opportunity for them to learn and to grow socially and emotionally. And that's what it's about. So that's my only other thought. I don't know if members of the committee have any other thoughts, or...
I would say thank you for your eloquent speech. I think you said it better than any of us, so I wouldn't even try and top that. Thank you very much.
My pleasure, my pleasure.
Just to acknowledge you, there are only 13 schools in Massachusetts that were chosen to be banner schools, and I believe we are the smallest of the schools. Small but mighty, that is our motto.
Congratulations.
And only 131 nationally, right?
And only 131 nationally.
Well, congratulations.
Yeah, congrats.
You did a terrific job.
Very proud of the students, very, very proud.
We're proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
So we're going to move on to comments from the general public. I would like to preface this a little bit. I know there are people here, and we're glad you're here, because at our last meeting, this discussion was first brought up, and it was brought up with the intent, which we publicly requested people to come in and give their input. And I know that a lot of the members reached out. We're trying to get as much as we can. I can tell you that your input tonight will not only go into what we're discussing and looking at, but there will not be a vote tonight on that, because we're not ready for that. And there's a lot of information that we want to put into that. This is something on the topic, on the agenda later on, which we will discuss, but we would request that any comment you have come now during the general comment time. We would request that you kind of keep it about the three minutes or so. We'd appreciate that. But your input is important to the decision we're going to make. We're looking for it and appreciate it. So with that said, I'll take anybody who's willing to come up and...
And obviously, we'll accept comments on any topic.
Any topic, really. This is a general comment on...
Right. We realize that, I think, there's several people here to specifically talk about the community use of school facilities policy. But we'll take comments on any topic from the general public. Just let us know your...
Sure, please.
Yeah, I have one quick comment.
Just let everybody know who you are.
Sure. I'm Tammy Johnson. Do I have my address as resident? Okay. 7 John Alden Court. So in seeing the facilities use policy, my big concern, also from being in the connection with the school, was the priority list and how the priority list changed from school activities as being number one, and town elections and town meetings being number two. Was, it was currently, town elections and meetings being number two, and then it switched to be the opposite. So I have a huge concern of that, because we do, as a school, use the facility, obviously, on a yearly basis, and we practice hard. For example, I am the drama club coach, and we practice, we start now in September for a play in February, and for a town meeting to be, you know, maybe an emergency one or something happened, and a facility to be used during that time, I think is, I think, I think the priority of how it was. School activities first, and then town meetings and elections. I think we need to cherish what we do in the schools and make sure that that is protected, and that, not that town meetings and elections aren't important, but our schools need to have that priority. So I'd like that consideration, please.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? It's, I mean, if you're here, this is the time to be helpful, because no decisions are made. Nothing's been finalized or done.
Hi. Hi, I'm Emily Slaven. I was recently hired as the Recreation Coordinator here, part-time for the town.
Welcome.
So I also live in town, and I have a couple of questions concerning the Recreation Department. I was hired to build the department and to offer more things, and I'm just kind of curious where the Recreation Department stands. You know, I know we have a committee that two of the people are chosen from the school committee and two from, you know, one, the superintendent, so, so forth, as you guys helped choose our committee, and I'm just kind of curious as to, if I have a recreation program, where do I have that? Because I'm working with local churches and things, but I'd like to have it in the school system. You know, we really want to try to find a place where these kids can do things after school for a reasonable price for parents. So I just would like to take that into consideration on where the Recreation Department falls with their programs.
That's an awesome point. Thank you very much.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Holmes, 12 Leonard Street. My initial question is, is the draft policy that's being discussed tonight, been released at all to the general public for review?
I don't believe so.
So my only concern is that if this is the only period of time that we have in this meeting to raise concerns, ask questions, have a discussion about a specific issue, it's hard to do that, since we have no idea what's going to be presented to us tonight. So I would just ask that you consider maybe some comments or discussion later in the meeting. I recognize you're not taking a vote tonight, but it's hard for us to share our thoughts or feelings right now on a document we haven't seen. Thank you.
Please.
Good evening. My name is John Rosen, and I am here on behalf of Carver Youth Basketball. It's, again, it's hard to say, just reiterating what the last speaker said. I don't know exactly what all the numbers, we've heard some numbers that were thrown out to us in terms of what the building use fees might change or turn into. What I think I might do is I sort of broke down in a little packet here how CYBL comes up with its current fee structure for the kids that play in town. In total, we have about 250 kids that play either in our recreational league for third through eighth graders, in our Learn to Play League, which is K through second grade, and our travel league, which, you know, is another portion of it. So there's three different sections. If you don't mind, I think I'm going to give this handout to you, which maybe you might find helpful to digest and use as you make the consideration.
Thank you.
What I tried to do in the table in the packet is I tried to break down all the current fees for Carver Youth Basketball for the three divisions: Recreation, Learn to Play, and Travel. And I tried to show you where our fees currently come from. For example, if you look at the first table, the recreational league, grades three through eight, it shows you the category of where the expense comes from, the calculation that we use to arrive at that number each year, the season total, and this is really based off of pretty much last year's numbers, and then a little explanation on the far right. So if you boil down our grade three through eight recreation division, and you look at our total expense for running those grades, and again, maintenance is included in this, security, referee fees, uniforms, insurance, all that kind of stuff is listed there. You'll see that it costs us about $19,375 to run that league of 220 players, which averages out to about $87 per player per year. Now, again, not knowing any of the specifics, and it would be kind of nice to know that, especially we're already up and running. We've already begun our registrations. In fact, our 100 kids that do play travel are already booked, and we've already done our pricing for the 2018-19 season. And when I saw it in the paper first, I was like, oh my God, what's happening here? We're really nervous, because we're behind the eight ball. We would have had to reflect those fees already in our registrations that are done for travel, and we're just starting up our rec registrations in a couple of weeks. The numbers that we've heard, and again, I don't know how accurate, there hasn't been a vote yet, but maybe $15 per hour for practice times during the weeknights for building use, and possibly $30 on the weekends for game times. What I did in the bold underneath our current costs is I tried to sort of prorate out the numbers. If you look at, for example, our 22 rec teams last year, they normally practice one hour a week per team, and if it's $15 per hour for building use, and it's a 12-week season, that alone adds almost $4,000 to our annual bill. If you look at just the weekends, just the games, it's 12 hours per weekend, because we have generally 11 games, based on our numbers, and a half hour for, you know, before and after for building use to clean up and put away things, times $30 an hour, that's $4,320 just to run our games on the weekend. So just the grades three through eight would add over $8,000 to our billing system this year, which we're fearful of, we're just not prepared to handle it, especially this year. So if you look at that analysis for grades three through eight, it's the same thing, the same analysis that I've done for Learn to Play, which is the really young kids, K through two. Again, those fees currently come out to about $3,500 a year. It's about 80 kids a year, so that costs for about $43, $44 per year per kid. If you do the same analysis for Learn to Play, it adds $1,500 a year to our bill. And then I do the same thing for Travel.
So we're going to take this and put this into our consideration, for sure. I just kind of want to keep it general.
I got you.
As close to three as possible.
Yep.
But I do appreciate this and your input in that, because everything that we can get is going to help us make the best decision.
Absolutely. And if you have any questions on it, please feel free to, you know...
We will. This is not the last conversation we'll have about this, so...
Okay.
All right.
And again, it was based off of 15 and 30, and that, you know, if you add up these three divisions, that's about $18,000 a year, right around the corner. We're just not prepared for that at this time. Carver Youth Basketball, just to make this one last point. We already pay about $5,000 in a year to have, to pay maintenance to come in at the end of the weekend, do the bathroom, sweep the floor, whatever, and we also hire a security guard for every hour that we are open on the weekends. So we already pay about $5,000 a year, and we feel like we don't have a problem paying our fair share in, you know, helping the cause, but if this is going to go up $18,000, the big fear is that money, how is it going to be used? Will it really be used and be brought back to the gyms or whatever to help maintain and whatever has to be done?
Thank you.
Seems like an awful lot, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Could we request this email? Just as a way to get...
Let's just hold off a minute, okay? Hold on. Let me just see if anybody else has anything to add, if you don't mind. Is there anybody else that'd like to come up and speak, and I, please, sir? And again, if you don't mind, just try and, because we want to hear from as many as we can, honestly.
I'll be quick. The more input is better. Same questions that that gentleman had. Eric Salazar, I'm the president of the Carver Cowboys Football and Cheer Program. So we pretty much just have, you know, a few questions, you know, as far as the field usage, the cost, how do we schedule it, and when is the field going to be available for usage? So it's really, I mean, the questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Nobody else? Any other topics, or please, yeah?
Michael Belzerini, 13 Williams Drive. My big issue is with the field, and specifically with the football program and the cheer program, is that, and it's a beautiful field, I've been on it. I've actually made friends with some of the guys from Texas that are actually sewing the field together. I'm really excited about it.
Awesome, huh?
I've pushed it with anybody that I know. I think it's a gem for the school. It's an attractant to keep kids playing football, track, soccer, field hockey. It's a sense of pride as well, and even our kids, I've been coaching youth football for the last five years. My son's in the football program, the baseball program, and the basketball program. And our big issue is, we don't have any lights in the town, and the practice schedule is going to be very important to us as far as using that field, if we get to use it, with the lights. Right now, it's almost killing our program. We start off with a 5:30 to 7:30 time range for practice, and by November, we're down to a half an hour. We basically meet, warm up, get as much as we can get going, and we're done. So I think that's an important, something important to think about with the youth programs. Just that we don't have, we don't have the facilities right now. We've already moved that field once. We're kind of tearing up someone's softball field, which I feel bad for those guys. And I just think that's just something you can consider.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Anyone else? Any topics? Kind of. Seeing no one moving to the mic, thank you very much for your input. I would just like to conclude with that part of it by saying that if you aren't here for the discussion when we do have the discussion about it, again, the vote won't happen tonight. Please watch the video and hear and see what we say and what documents you might be able to get about that so far, and stay in touch, because we will try and put something out before any final decision is made. So, thank you for your input. And now we take comments from EAPC. Tom, how you doing?
Hi there, how's everyone doing? Excellent. Brief. I just wanted to thank the school committee and Superintendent Neath for working with us throughout the school, throughout the year with negotiations. I really want to thank my para-negotiations teams, they put a lot of time, effort, hard work into trying to work towards coming to with a contract. You know, as a team, we met many, many times over the school year, over the summer, you know, along, you know, with you, trying to come up with the ultimate goal. And then I also lastly want to thank all my paras who attended the meetings to show support for us and the work we did, and to kind of come together, this final document was a true team effort, so.
I would concur.
Thanks, Tom.
Very much.
Thank you.
Scott, do you want to move that here?
If it's okay, if we can go forward on the agenda, and then we'll move that up, maybe after the approval of minutes.
After that, okay.
So, we can do our staff recognitions, because I have some of our staff members here tonight who we've invited to the meeting and told them they'd be done by 7:15, 7:20.
No problem.
So, if it's okay, we'll do an update for the student advisory council, minutes, recognition of new staff, and then move the para contract up to the beginning of the agenda.
Miss Sweeney, you're up.
All right. Does it work? Okay, it works. Hello, everyone. So, if you aren't aware, I'm Jenna Sweeney, and I'm the representative from student council. So, we have many updates for you. So, over the summer, myself and Brenna Lagerquist went to the 2018 National Student Council Conference in Wayzata, Minnesota, and it was awesome, just to say the least. It was, I think it was like 2,000 people from all across the nation, and it was all people grades nine through 12, and we heard many motivational speakers, did lots of workshops, just the whole thing, it was awesome. We had to, excuse me, go sightseeing, and then also in the summer, myself, Brenna, again, Josh Kennedy and Morgan Campbell attended the MASCE Summer Leadership Program at Western State University, which is like, the Nationals is, like, MASCE brings us there, but like, MASCE is like for the, just like the state. So, we all go to Western State, and it's like the same thing as Nationals, except we're put into individual councils. So, since I'm from Carver, and say I'm going into my second year, which would be like rainbow year, I wouldn't, and say Josh, which he also was like a rainbow, I wouldn't be allowed to be in the same council as him. So, you're completely separated from your town, unless you're from like a huge school like Middleboro, they have a huge delegation, so like there's a few repeats, but the whole goal is to be separated from your council, so you get to meet new people. And it's like the same thing as Nationals, just like separated, it's very, very fun. So, if any students are listening, I would definitely recommend going. Over the summer, we also did the firefighter clam bake, and we passed out food to the firefighters, and we also at Old Home Day set up tables for the community to enjoy food as well. We had our full, first full council meeting where we just did an introduction, talked about what student council is all about, MASCE and CMASK and all the great things that student council does. Next, we are, on October 12th, our executive board will be heading to the College of the Holy Cross, and we do an annual officer shop meeting, and it's where the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils, their student-led board, they run a conference for us for all the officers, and they have like little sections, so like other, so presidents can go in one workshop with each other and see how other presidents like lead their own councils, so it's a great resource for officers. And then we also are going to CMASK, which is at Silver Lake Regional High School, and that's with southeastern region of Massachusetts all come together, and we share leadership skills and do workshops and speakers, do you see a theme? And the next, what we're going to be doing as just the council, is running Crusader Fest, which is just a big carnival out on the high school parking lot. We're not sure we're going to have it because there's a lot of construction going on, it's still going to be at the high school, we're just going to relocate it a little bit. We don't have a date for that yet, considering with the track, so we're just going to, we're going to see how that works out. And next, it's a lot, sorry about that, but President's Dinner is also a thing that MASCE runs, and unfortunately, the President's Dinner is on the same day as Senior Dinner Dance, so, and our executive board is filled with seniors, except for like, I think, three people, and the three people are sophomores, so they don't have transportation. So, instead of Claire Manning our president going, we're going to be having Morgan Campbell, junior from our full council, attend to be step up, to step up into that leadership role. And that's all I got.
I think might be a good reminder, so several members of the council are, have regional positions as well.
Yes, me and Josh Kennedy.
Yeah, so if you give the audience a reminder of what regional positions we're in, that would be great, and maybe talk a little bit about how that's going.
So, myself and Josh Kennedy. Josh Kennedy is the publicity coordinator, and I am CMASK webmaster. Josh's position is, just maintains to Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, all the social medias, so everyone can see what's going on online, and I also deal with social media, but on the website, and I deal with forms and everything, so all the forms and documents can all get out to the southeastern region.
I just think it's great to see Carver students in regional positions on the leadership board, so congratulations to you and Josh Kennedy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Any questions? I know I just threw a lot at you.
That was a lot, yeah. That's awesome, though.
Great, thank you. No problem.
Thank you, Jenna. Nice to see you.
You too.
So, moving on to approval of minutes. I would take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from August 20th, regular session.
Second. Motion made in second. Any questions, changes, comments? Seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee board of selectmen joint session minutes. Doesn't have a date on it, should I?
Should, yeah.
From June 26th.
June 26th.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions, comments, changes? Seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
And the executive session was also the same date, should place.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the school committee board of selectmen joint executive session minutes.
Well, second.
Motion made in second. Any questions, comments, or changes?
New, sir.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you very much. Communication.
All right, no specific communications this month, so we'll be moving into reports from the superintendent. I'd like to begin by, we want to recognize our new teachers in the district, so if I could invite Rui Maestis and Janelle Holly up to the mic, they're going to introduce the new teachers and administrators within their own individual buildings. Good evening.
I would like to introduce Mr. Ben Tan. Ben Tan is our new music teacher for the elementary school, and he is currently teaching all of our children, pre-K through fifth grade. So, a little bit of background on Mr. Tan, and here he is in the front row. So, Ben actually has his undergraduate degree in journalism from Emerson College, and he then went on to earn his master's degree in music education from Boston Conservatory. He conducted his student teaching in Lexington, Mass. last year. He was in a pre, a grade, kindergarten through grade five elementary school from September to January, and then from January to June, he was doing his student teaching in Wayland, which is his, actually his hometown. So, Mr. Tan's specialty instrument is the piano, but he loves guitar, loves all the other instruments, he enjoys playing the ukulele, and will be rolling out ukulele lessons in fifth grade for term three. A couple of other interesting facts about Mr. Tan, he, this past spring, he was in a music director for a show called The Putnam County Spelling Bee, and that was in Saugus, he was nominated, or his, the group was nominated for the best community musical in Eastern Mass. And he has served as a music director for several musicals, including James and the Giant Peach, Shrek, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat, that was a little hard to say. And his favorite thing about Carver Elementary School at this time is it's been an extremely welcoming community, and he feels right at home.
It's not the room full of pianos.
So, welcome to Ben.
Good evening, everyone. I have the privilege of introducing three individuals this evening. I will start first with Mary Guiney. I don't know if you want to stand just so we can recognize you. Mary grew up in West Plymouth, and she received her undergraduate degree in anthropology and chemistry from Smith College, as well as her master's from Bridgewater State. For the past four years, she has taught science and math in situat for students in grades five, seven, and eight. This is her first year teaching the sixth grade, and she's very excited to be delving into those topics. For her student teaching, she spent two months in England, which gave her a taste of international travel. That has sparked international travel as being one of her personal passions with her three sisters. This summer, they traveled to Australia for two weeks, and she shared with us what that experience was like. When she's not teaching, her greatest joys are reading and baking. In addition, she competes in obstacle course races, which I'm excited to hear about, and she considers herself a lifelong learner and enjoys learning from the students as much as she enjoys teaching them every day. That's Mary Guiney.
Welcome, Mary. Thank you.
Next, we have Reagan Whipple. Reagan is a graduate of Providence College with a bachelor's of art in Spanish and a bachelor's of science in health policy and management. She received her master's in education from Fitchburg State University in teaching and curriculum. This is Reagan's second year teaching, and she comes to us from Sturgis Charter School in Hyannis. She lived in Plymouth her entire life and is the youngest of six children. Her family is cranberry farming family, and she really enjoys that, so she's right at home here. In her free time, she enjoys ballroom dancing as well as horseback riding, and we're happy to have her as part of our team.
Welcome.
And last, but definitely not least, we have Mike Martin, who is joining our administrative team. He was born and raised in Glasgow, Scotland. He earned his undergraduate degree in social studies from the University of Paisley, which is one of the things that they pride in Scotland. He moved to Plymouth in 1996, where he began to work as an outdoor education instructor and athletics director at Camp Bourndale. After eight years in that position, he transitioned to public schools, developing and implementing a pilot program for at-risk students in the Plymouth Public Schools. He was then offered the opportunity to teach eighth grade civic history, which was a position he held for eight years. In 2013, he returned to Camp Bourndale as their educational director. During this time, he worked with educators in districts throughout New England, in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and New Hampshire, ensuring that the classes and activities offered at Bourndale were aligned to state standards. Over the last three years, he's held the position of assistant principal at Monamoy Regional High School in Harwich. His main duties and responsibilities include observing and evaluating 20, over 20 teachers, promoting student well-being, safety, and implementing the school's Jocelyn program, a unique initiative which provides all students with daily academic assistance, in addition to a multitude of enrichment offerings. And he's excited to return to Bourndale again to support the work we do here.
And so, I'd also like to just extend my welcome to all of the new staff, and on behalf of the committee, and say that, you know, for each of these positions, we really had outstanding candidate pools, and each of these people rose to the top of those pools based on their really outstanding backgrounds and preparation for the positions, and we're excited to have each one of them here, and we're looking forward to them taking the same pride in the school district that I know that all of we do. So, thank you to all of our new members of the community, we're glad to have you here. Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
You still have some other...
Yeah, and then, so, there have been some other personnel moves during the past month, so we'll review the personnel issues that have happened. So, we've had some resignations. We had Kayla Trudeau, a middle high school power professional, Carol Kelly, a middle high school power professional, Caitlin Bryan, a middle high school science teacher, Anthony Fullmeyer, a middle high school sped power professional, and Annette Buckley from food services. And in the same time, we've hired new staff, some of those to replace the positions above. Mike Martin has been hired since our last meeting, Ben, Reagan, and Mary had been hired previously, so they had been mentioned in previous personnel updates. Angela Patton, middle high school para. Jessica Rizzuto, a former graduate of Carver Middle High School, is coming back, middle high school sped para. Nancy McLean will be a long-term sub for ELL for a maternity leave. Deandra Bergman, who's been a long-term sub for us in many positions, is going to come back and do a long-term sub in art as a maternity leave. Sarah Baker in food services. And Philip Giannattasio is going to be a long-term sub for us as the athletic trainer, and he began the position athletic trainer this past Monday. So, that's our personnel update since our last meeting. And then, obviously, we thank our new teachers for being here this evening. You're welcome to stay as long as you like, but no one, no one would be offended if you took the opportunity to move on whenever you like as well. So, thank you very much for being here this evening.
So, moving on.
Yep, moving on the agenda. Superintendent Goals. So, as part of the evaluation process, I do have to identify three goals for the school committee and look for the school committee's approval of those goals. So, I'm just going to read the goals themselves, not necessarily all of the action steps, review them with the committee, and then take any questions you may have about them. I'll give you some brief background on why I selected each of those goals for this year. The goals would be for this, this school year, 2018, 2019, and then I would give you some reflections on my goals towards the end of the year as we go through the evaluation process, and you would take that information as we go forward. So, I have to identify a professional practice goal, a district improvement goal, and also a student learning goal. So, professional practice goal, I will just read it. "In order to develop skills in strategy development, data analysis, and instructional leadership, I will complete the third year of the new superintendent's induction program as measured by continued development and implementation of the educational blueprint by May of 2019." So, I know you all know that I've been involved in the induction program. The induction program is a three-year program, which is in cooperation with the Department of Education, and also the Mass Association of School Superintendents. You know, they had a real concern that superintendents in some ways were, I guess, there was a quick churn rate.
Weird.
And it's a lot of times, superintendents were struggling to maintain their positions. And the state really said, we're concerned about this, so we want to actually establish some mentoring for all new superintendents. It is the recommendation of the mentor program that my professional practice goal will be tied to the program for each of the first three years. It has been for the first two years, and I would like to have my professional practice goal continue in terms of my involvement in the mentoring program. The mentoring program takes a little bit different look this year. We actually do what we're going to call some regional consultancies, which actually we're going to be hosting here in Carver, so I'm going to be the host of those. So, all the new superintendents from the South Shore will be meeting in Carver bi-monthly, so every other month we'll be meeting here. We'll be joined by our mentors, and then obviously I'll have regular contact with my mentor, Jack Ahern, as well, which the members of the committee have met.
Showing off the new school.
Yeah, and let's just showing off the new school. District improvement goal. "In order to ensure the district has an evaluation system that supports teachers and administrators in improving their overall performance, I will organize a team of administrators and teachers to review and, as appropriate, revise the educator evaluation system for teachers as measured by the creation of a revised educator evaluation system for the Carver Public Schools." So, through some discussion, there's been some concerns about the implementation of the educator evaluation system, and through that mutual discussion, we've come to an agreement, I think we can say, to look at that system, and I've taken the charge to take that as a, take the leadership role in that. Obviously, it would be a district improvement goal, because, you know, if we're working to fine-tune the educator evaluation system, you know, the goal of that is that's going to have long past, long-lasting effects on all the educators in the district and hopefully improve district performance. So, you know, more, there'll be more information on that to come as we go through the year. And then the final, the student learning goal, I've tied really back to some of the work that we've been doing throughout the district on safe and supportive schools. So, "In order to develop student self-awareness and self-management skills to improve academic outcomes, I'll work with the administrative leadership team in implementing the Safe and Supportive Schools Action Plan, developed as part of the Safe and Supportive Schools Grant, through developing programs to assist students' social-emotional learning skills as measured by programmatic evaluations, teacher professional development opportunities, and social-emotional learning." And my thought process here was, we, we as a district have kind of put that focus on, we need to do everything we can to better support students' social-emotional skills, and that this would be a good area for me to take leadership in, and with the goal of, if we're providing a safe, secure environment for all students, that's going to improve learning outcomes, and that's how that ties into and becomes a student learning goal. So, those are my three proposed goals for this year. You know, at this time, I'd take any questions or a motion, or entertain a motion to look at them.
Yeah, I'll take the motion.
Make a motion to approve Scott's 2018-19 goals.
Well, second.
So, motion made in second. Any questions for Scott?
Are we going to be getting periodic updates on your advancement on these?
You certainly can. In, over the last... And over the last couple of years, that update's kind of come before the evaluation process. So, usually in February, I'll kind of give you a detailed update on where I stand on the entire rubric for the superintendent and then specifically on these goals. If people wanted an update prior to February, we could certainly do that. I would entertain.
I think I'd ask for one specifically on the district improvement goal. Because I think for the first one, I'm more interested in what you're going to be picking next year, because then you're...
Yeah.
But I think these are prioritized really well with what we're facing, especially number three. But I know number two has been a concern and I would make an update on how those go, just so we can make progress.
Absolutely, and I think that I could definitely give an update based on when that committee's formed and the steps we're going to move forward to do that. So, I have no problem giving an update on that, you know, as early as November if people want me to do that.
When you have some...
Yeah, but I think by November, we'll have a, hopefully, we'll have a specific plan of this is the team, this is who's meeting, this is what's happening. Yeah, a little bit more in terms of the format. Could certainly do that.
Scott, the educator evaluation system for teachers, how often is that looked into and possibly revised?
Well, the, well, this was, the process was established by the state and it was totally revised in 2013? I look at Tammy, was it 2013 or 2014? So, we're in, Jim Meredith?
I think 2011.
I think it was 2011, it's been that many years?
Yeah, it was.
Oh, and so, they actually established the guidelines and what we did at the time is, they totally revamped the system prior to that period. And I can, I'm going to try to be careful to not give an hour explanation, because I could give an hour explanation on this.
I'm sorry.
Of how the system was different and how it constitutes now. But in essence, and if anybody feels, everybody wants to weigh in on this, Tammy is from the union perspective, or Tom, or Meredith, or they certainly feel welcome to. But prior to this, I can tell you what we had in Calver. We had an evaluation system in which teachers were evaluated, they were in a four-year cycle, teachers with professional status. So, those teachers actually only formally evaluated once every four years. And the other three years, they did other things that were considered part of their evaluation, which they were evaluated on, but it wasn't a formal observation of classroom teaching. So, once a teacher earned professional status, they only had a formal observation once every four years of classroom teaching. In the first three years of teaching, they were evaluated on a regular basis. And different, throughout the state, the systems were really different because it was individually negotiated between the unions and the towns. And the state had some concerns about the inconsistency of the evaluation system across the state and really the frequency of observations. Because there were a lot of systems that had a setup where teachers were only evaluated once every four years, once every two years, once every three years, depending on the system you were in. So, they passed the law, the legislature passed the law, which changed the system. And the system required more frequent observations of a shorter duration with feedback. It also established that every teacher, like I just did, every teacher has to develop a professional practice goal and a student learning goal. Every administrator has to have a student learning goal, a district improvement goal, and a professional practice goal. And you're part of the evaluation system, it was based on progress towards meeting your goals. So, it established a goals pitch, which didn't previously exist. It started more frequent and regular observations. After the legislation was passed, they, and it also established a teacher rubric that was uniform throughout the state, which didn't previously exist. So, the big changes that happened in 2011, they pointed out to me, in my mind, the three big changes were establish the rubric, number two, it established to teachers how to identify professional practice and student learning goals, number three, more frequent observations. Based on those concepts, the, and DESI established what they called model language for your contract. And then they told districts, you can either adopt, adapt, or revise that model language. So, we went through a process in 2011 and we made some revisions. We didn't wholesale adopt the language from DESI. We made some revisions in that, but we didn't totally revise it. And now, we've lived the system for seven years and people, as we've lived the system, have said had some concerns about the language that was adopted. And the administrators have some concerns about the language that was adopted. So, we're all agreeing to sit down again together as a group and look at our current contractual language and say, "Where do we have common areas of concern and how can we revise that?"
Makes sense.
So, I don't know, that's kind of my summary of the purpose of the group.
I also think part of an answer to your question is, there's a new sheriff in DESI too, so you never know what's going to happen.
You know, I left out some big pieces here about, there used to be a language called DDMs and we could get, I could go off on this for a little bit, but that's kind of where we are now. So, that's my summary.
Okay.
Any other?
Any other questions? Anybody?
No.
So, are those in favor for approving the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the grand opening ceremony. So, the grand opening ceremony for the new elementary school is going to be this Thursday, September 20th, starting at 5:00. We're saying it's going to be open from 5:00 to 8:00. I'll just give you a quick rundown on the scheduled events for the evening and then entertain any questions. And obviously, we want to encourage the entire community. The goal of this is for it to be a community event. We know that many parents of students at the elementary school have already had the opportunity to visit the school through open house, because we had open house last week for all grades in the elementary school. So, I think a lot of elementary parents have already come. Certainly, they can come again and we welcome them to come again. But really, I think this is also a larger event for middle high school parents and really the entire community who want to see the school that we've put into place, which is really just a great place to be. So, you know, obviously, part of this beyond the agenda is to extend that invitation everybody, because we want the entire community to come. General sense of what's going to happen, the Calver Cub Scouts is going to be involved in raising the flag. We have six students who are going to sing the national anthem, two from the middle school, two from the elementary school, two from the high school. The speakers that evening, myself will be the master of ceremonies, Dick Ward, the chairperson of the building committee, Deborah Goldberg, who is the state treasurer and the head of the MSBA, is going to come and speak, Michael Milonowski, the town administrator. The Calver Middle High School Choir, actually, grades six through 12 is going to be performing, maybe upwards of 60 students, I found out today, Ruby, so we'll have to talk about that, which is great. Well, great, we're going to have 60 students performing a song during the presentation. We have Madeline Valencourt, who's a grade five student, who's going to speak. Ruby's going to speak, Rue Master's going to speak as the principal of the elementary school, and Bob Baldo as a teacher at the elementary school, you know, our most senior teacher in the district, who lived in the old buildings for a long time, so he's going to take a few minutes. Our goal is at the presentations, and I've seen everybody's speeches except for Deborah Goldberg, the state treasurer, she hasn't shared her presentation with me. Everybody else's presentation really is two or three minutes. So, our goal is that, you know, the presentation piece will be a half hour, around 5:00 to 5:30. We're hoping at 5:30 that we'll actually cut the ribbon and move into the building. So, there will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We have two students from each grade, grades one through five, who will be actually there cutting the ribbon and welcoming people into the, with, along with members of the school building committee, and they're going to welcome people in. And then, once we move into the building, we're going to have food from local restaurants, the Calver PTO, the Calver Middle High School Culinary Program. We're going to have student-led tours. There are six project areas in the building. Each project area is named after a historical Calver figure. The building committee selected those names from advice from a group of fifth-grade students last year. Those fifth-grade students will be in their project areas presenting, making like a little 10-minute presentation as why that area was named after that historical Calver figure. So, we'll have presentations between 6:00 and 7:00 in the project areas. The Calver Jazz Band is going to perform three or four songs at 6:30 in the cafeteria. And obviously, then we're just going to be, you know, inviting people to check the building out and visit the building. So, it's kind of a general overview of what's going to happen that evening and we welcome the entire Calver community. And there's been some questions, so I'll address this, about lights. So, though we do not have light, we have a parking lot, but there's no lights in the parking lot right now. So, by the end of the evening, it will be dark and it's very dark in the parking lot. So, Calver Fire is going to help us out and they're going to be bringing over spotlights and they're going to flood spotlights onto the parking lot, so that hopefully we'll have appropriately, appropriate lighting out there as people leave. And, yeah, we're just looking forward to the event and invite the entire community to be there. There will be bricks from the elementary school on sale.
On sale, yeah.
Yeah, so we had, we made, we had 52 bricks purchased and our goal was to have 52 bricks. And they told us that generally, for every one brick we were going to carve, they needed three, because the bricks would often crumble. But they told us, Ediville Railroad did it for us, they have the machine to engrave the bricks. And the person in Ediville, Deborah Johnson, actually told me, she said, "The older bricks do better." And the older bricks in the elementary school did really well. I believe, I think we were able to actually engrave 130. So, they only lost, but we gave them 150 and they only lost 20 in the engraving process. And they were thinking they were going to lose 100 in the engraving process. So, we've sold 52. If you're interested in purchasing a brick, they'll be available that night at the grand opening for $20 a brick and we have 130 of them. So, 52 were spoken for. The other ones are open for sale.
And all the money goes into the running track?
The money that's raised is going to defray the cost of the grand opening, so certain things like, yes, sort of like the sign on Route 58 and those types of things. So, there was some costs associated with the grand opening. And then, beyond defraying the cost of the grand opening, it's going towards, it will go towards the walking, running path that we're looking to build from Rene de Masch at the end of the project, around the fields there.
And Calver, the local Calver community restaurants have...
Yep, so we have, we're going to have donations from several area restaurants, including Mama Mia's, Little Kitchen, Cornerstones, Dunkin' Donuts. I probably shouldn't run through the list, because I'm going to miss somebody who is donating food, so if I missed you on the list, Cumberland Farms, who did I miss, Ruby? Erickson's Ice Cream, and then, Calver PTO, some parents doing some baked goods, and Calver High School Culinary is doing some food as well.
Just putting some food together, right? So, it should be a very good night. Any questions or anything for Scott? Sounds good, come forward to it.
That was just informational, no action needed on that one. Moving on to our next agenda item, updates on the track and field project. Track and field project continues to move along very well. The field installation is almost complete and the site works coming together. At this point, we're still looking for substantial completion between October 3rd and October 10th. And our goal at this point, which we're on track right now, the goal of having everybody play a home game on the field this year. So, that still looks like that's a possible goal, you know? You never know, so, you know, we never know what's going to happen between now and October 3rd and 10th to have that not occur. But right now, we don't see anything that's going to kind of block us from that. So, we'd like to have at least each high school team have at least one home game on the field. The project has moved along effectively with minimal change orders. We currently have approved change orders that are less than 1% of the total project cost. The change orders represent a cost of $39,102. A lot of these changes were actually owner-driven. The largest change order was the addition of what's called a finish link system, which is going to allow for digitized timing of races at the track. The contingency budget for change orders was 3%. So, at this time, we still have $118,133 remaining in the contingency fund and we, you know, we have a large portion of the project completed. Really, at this point, I'm not saying there won't be a change order, but as the farther you go along and once you're out of the ground, your opportunity for change orders really diminish. So, I think there's a good chance that we're going to come in totally under budget on the project. So, with that, we've kept the time-lapse video, so it's about a minute and 45 seconds, 50 seconds, that shows us from June through September 8th. It's not through today, so this is the video through where we stand on the project through September 8th, and we'll show the time-lapse video. This is from the far end of the field, looking towards the school by where the scoreboard is now.
It's a humid summer, man, look at all those clouds.
This video was done by Bruce Skinner, so he's mounted the camera and put it together for us. Again, that was just informational. I'd obviously take any questions people may have.
Will that grand opening day be something where we try to plan, like, all the sporting events, boom, 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 so?
We haven't sat down and specifically planned what the grand opening ceremony will be for the new track and field. That's probably our next event to plan after our current grand opening coming up this Thursday. So, but yeah, we're going to, we haven't gone into the details in that at all, actually. So, we'll be sitting down and take a look at what that's going to actually look like as the grand opening ceremony for the field, but we will have one.
Okay.
And we were supposed to move this up to, we didn't move it up, professional bargaining agreement with the paraprofessionals. So, at this time, we invite up Tom and the members of the EAPC Para negotiating team, if they want to join Tom up at the table, that'd be great. Yeah, and Tom has one as well. So, I would just like to, obviously, we need a vote for ratification from the committee, we'll just do a quick overview. So, as Tom said, you know, we'd like to thank the members of the negotiating team for their efforts. We went back and forth and I think we came to a good place and I think we both recognized each other's positions a little bit. So, you know, the powers came in with some concerns and as did the administration, but I think we worked well together to reach something that was of mutual agreement to us. So, you know, I'm going to advocate that the committee support the agreement and I'll quickly do an overview of the key pieces of the agreement. So, you know, the package does include some minor language changes, but I want to review the financial terms of the agreement. So, we increased longevity for employees with between 15 and 19 years of service from $475 to $600. We increased longevity for employees with over 20 years of service from $625 to $800. We established a bus monitor rate at $13 an hour. Currently, bus monitors are paid on a salary schedule which is tied to the salary schedule, which is a little bit higher. And then, we restructured the salary schedule a little bit. So, what we did is we took the, currently, the paraprofessionals have 15 steps and they're on each of those, they're on each step for three years. So, it's three years on a step and then it goes up, three years on a step, then it goes up. So, the first restructure is we had the paras salary increase each of the 15 steps. And then, we also increased the compensation a little bit. The way, the easiest way to look at it is, we added 45 cents to the FY18 Step 1 and then we increased the 15 steps from there by 1% each step. And then, for FY20, we did the same thing. We took the FY19 Step 1, added 35 cents, and then increased the step by 1% all the way up to the 15. Same thing in FY21, we added 25 cents to the FY19 Step 1 and went up. So, each year, we added some 45, 35, 25 cents to Step 1 and then we made the increase in the 15 steps 1% above that, which increased the compensation package for the paraprofessionals overall. So, in essence, that's what the committee would be voting to approve this evening. So, you know, the subcommittee who negotiated it supports the agreement. I support the agreement and would encourage the committee to make a motion in favor of accepting the agreement.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the paraprofessional bargaining agreement for 2018 through 2021.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second. Any questions, comments?
I think, just glad that you guys could be creative and come up with something and that's great and that just speaks to the fact that we've got really good people. And so, we're really happy that you're happy and, because we're very happy to have you here for the long term. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd just like to say, as I did last time, that it was a pleasure working and I think the people of this town are lucky, sitting with the people that we work with to try and work and come up with the right agreement. And I think this is a great step in an ever-changing process that we're always going to be working on, but I thank you for all the work that you... But I, but I, I thank you for all the work that you ladies did and the time that you guys put in to, to come to this agreement. Thank you. So with that, I will accept a vote. Roll call?
Uh, nope, just...
Just a regular vote?
Yep, a regular vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? No? Unanimous?
So we have, we have two copies of the agreement. One for, James will sign both copies, and if a representative of the APC wants to sign both copies, that would be great. All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And, sorry about that. My intention was to, our intention was to move that up in the agenda, and somehow we, uh, we got ahead, we all got behind ourselves, I guess. I don't know. We didn't really get ahead of ourselves. We got behind ourselves. So I apologize for that.
Scott, I'll take this next one. It's a discussion with the board of selectmen for budget planning. And this was something initially I called Alan about our, our quarterly joint meeting, which this year happens to be on a day when we're, when we're meeting for negotiations. So wouldn't be able to happen on that, that final Thursday. And in that discussion, a few things were stated about what to do and, and moving forward and what we would like to do. And part of what we talked about, and Alan had sort of put this forth, and it was about getting the chairs and the vice chairs together a little more. And we talked about the fact that Scott and, and Michael and Brad and Meg are often meeting. And no, none of us are there representing anything within those meetings. So we're not really looking to form a committee or to do anything in that sense, but maybe to attend those meetings a little more regularly and put some more local input to that. So that we can have a little more say in where things are going. And it's not so much of a dragging process where we have to wait next month till the next meeting and then the next month. And they're meeting continually. We're not gonna meet on every single one of those, but we'll establish certain dates where the chairs and vice chairs of both committees will join that meeting of those four and, and try and come up with some ways to, basically, the direction is to try and figure out how to get some money in the right places to do the right things we need to move the schools forward and our whole education system forward. So with that in mind, I, I, it's not really a vote because we're not really formulating any committee that way. But would, any input or questions or comments? He's already in anyway, so.
This would just be you and I, right?
This would be you and I, Alan, and, and Ron, and then the four that normally meet to discuss those things without our input. So I think our input would be important and putting it there. And anything that comes across in those meetings will be brought back to our respective committees either way. No decisions will be made in any way. It's more of an informational and a more constant input to, to maybe get that perspective in there and then come back with, with more divisive information on how we're gonna move forward.
I think it's wise, because meeting, having a voice with them more than just quarterly, with our quarterly joint meetings is, is a, is a smart thing to do, I think, to keep, to keep what our, what we, the goals that we want to see brought forward go in the right direction.
Well, and I think those quarterly meetings were really established to keep the two committees on the same page because there was a lot of speculation and miscommunication for, for quite a while. So I think bringing them on the same page so that we're on the same page, just sort of in a general topic, was the intent of those meetings. This is far more specific to a, to a financial goal, so it's, it's not as well-accomplished in that situation.
Still very important.
Exactly. But I think the fact that they're meeting this way anyway. So to put our voice and input in that and have something to bring back to the committees will be a lot more powerful than what we're trying to do and understand.
Absolutely. I just wanna say thank you for doing that because I think it is important that we have our voice there because we all know the direction that we want to move in. And I think if we, you know, they hear our voices more often.
Yeah. That was, that's the goal, really.
Right. It'll, it'll work out for everyone. So I, I, I thank you for, for doing that.
Agreed.
Moving on.
All right, moving on in terms of recommendations. So first, we have a second reading of policy BGE, which is policy dissemination. The intentions of the revision is to make a clear statement that the school committee policies will be made available to the public. We plan on digitizing the policy manual and having it available on the district website. Beyond the public, 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 sorry, beyond publicizing the entire policy manual, we plan on highlighting some key policies. For example, this policy stating that all district policies will be made, made available to the public. This is second reading, and we look to entertain a motion at this time. But before we do that, we have, we have already put the policy manual on the website as a PDF. So I want to show people how to get to that. And then next month, when we come back in October, we're gonna show, we're gonna make it more than a PDF. We're gonna make it accessible links, so you can link on each individual policy and go to it. So we're in the, we're in the process of working on that. We have part of that done, but it's not totally complete yet. But it should be complete by the October meeting, and then we'll show that to the committee at the October meeting. We'll have that as an agenda item in October. But if you go to school, under School Committee on the school website, so carver.org, and you go to School Committee, and then School Committee Policy Manual. And right, right now, it's just a PDF of the entire...
Yeah, when you say the entire, part of the reason we want to highlight is how many pages?
Meredith, how long is that PDF?
How long is that PDF? 387 pages. She's the one that's putting it all online.
So obviously, so the, so the policy, so the policy manual now is currently on the website. But we're, we're gonna make it, each, so that each policy has individual link. And then our thought process is we're gonna create kind of like a cover page, you know, frequently-used policies or policies we think the public might be most interested in. You know, obviously, the committee's gonna be making some decisions on what's on that page. But we're gonna say, it will make, you'll, you'll have that choice to say, we feel like these are policies we want to highlight or that might have the most interest to the public. Not that the all 300 and, how many pages, Gina?
Eighty-seven.
Not that all 387 pages aren't of interest to the public. But it'll be a little, it'll be a little more accessible than the PDF that's on the website now.
You wanted to highlight the ones that will be more common and more addressed, particularly the communication between the public and the schools.
Yeah. And so that should all be up and set to go for our October meeting, and we'll show it to the committee at that time. So I, I mean, I look for a motion to approve this policy, basically saying that, you know, it will be our responsibility to ensure that the policies are available to the public at all times.
I will make a motion that we adopt the revised policy. Submit it.
I'll second.
Motion made. Seconded. Any questions or comments? Pretty straightforward, right?
This is great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous?
So moving on to our next policy, which is community use of the school facilities. So for your background, you have a link of, of a current policy and the proposed revisions. And technically, right now, there's two policies, KG and KGR. We're proposing that we combine these policies into one policy called KG, which is linked for the group. There are four major changes in the proposed policy. So I'm gonna outline those four major changes for those in the audience. Then, then I'm gonna turn it to Brad to kind of give some more information. And maybe we can address some of the questions that were raised this evening through public comment. So I think we do have some, we have some responses to those, but maybe not to all of them. And we had talked about, the goal is that we're gonna bring this policy back again in October, with maybe at that time, looking to move forward with a, a vote on the policy revisions at that time. So, just giving the overview, then I'll turn it to Brad. Four major changes. First, we would begin to charge local community groups a small fee for the use of fields and building spaces. Under the current policy, local communities only have to pay a custodial fee or security fee based upon the needs of their requests. And I guess, I may start answering questions. So I know Mr., Mr. Rosen brought up the concern about paying a security fee and custodial fee. So those fees will be wrapped into the new fee. So, well, possibly. There's gonna be a piece that, depending on what you're doing. But part of that fee, so the cost structure that Mr. Rosen laid out for us, and this is informational, so obviously, we need to get the information out to everybody, is that it's not gonna be fully the cost that's outlined in your, what you, your analysis, based on your not, not having that knowledge of how that fee was gonna be rolled out. So some of those fees you're currently paying are enrolled into the new fee. And we'll, maybe Brad will give us a little more detail on that when we get to that piece. Second, we're gonna require that there always be custodial security present for any group to use the buildings, including on weekends. This is a change, and we feel like the purpose of this change goes back to security. We're gonna have this state-of-the-art, brand-new football field. We have an elementary school that has a brand-new gym, and is gonna have brand-new softball fields, brand-new soccer fields. I mean, so we're gonna have all this great new field space. And we feel like we have a responsibility to help maintain those spaces. And part of that point of maintaining those spaces is having some level of security. So that people aren't using that, those fields without staff being there in, maybe enforcing the rules of what we expect for appropriate treatment of those fields. So we're basically saying, if you're gonna use fields or from the school, there needs to be the custodial or, or a security fee. But again, that's, that's tied into the cost of the renting of the field. And Mr. Brothers will get into that when he gets into more details. Third, the fee on weekends would be different than during the week, based on no custodian scheduled for the weekends. That actually ties into number two. So during the week, we have, Monday through Thursday, we have 24-hour custodial service. We run three shifts of custodians. So there's always a custodian there. So we wouldn't be charging you a fee to have a custodian there because there's a custodian there. On the weekends, there aren't custodians. So that gets built into that fee of saying there has to be a custodial security fee. Finally, the overall fee structure is increased for the use of all spaces. You know, there's detailed proposed changes that are in your background. There was a concern about making this policy available. So I feel like the proposed policy, the first thing we should do is, we can certainly post it on the school district website for people to review. So we can do that and have people look at the proposed policy, so people can access it, read it, see all the details. I know some concerns were brought up tonight. I have no issue with whether we coordinate through Mr. Brothers or through Mr. Schultz that we give a copy of the proposed policy to the presidents of every sports league in town. I think we could do that. So if we found, you know, we know who the presidents are of the different youth leagues in town, recreation committee, that we give those people a copy of the policy. We can email it to them, so everybody has it and they can look at it. But we'll also post it out on the website. So I know that was a concern that raised tonight in terms of people saying, the only really public dissemination was through, I believe, a story that was done in the Carver Reporter. So that, right now, that's been the only public dissemination of the proposed policy change. So we want, we want to have the public, the public input on that. You know, so overall, our, our big purpose here is really twofold. One is we have all these great new spaces. And I think there has been concerns in the past in the community that these spaces haven't been always properly maintained. And part of the fee structure is to help support us in properly maintaining those fields. The other part is, the reality of the fields we have, especially the turf field, has a replacement cost. They estimate that the turf field needs to be replaced every 10 to 12 years. A turf field replacement is gonna be in the varying from seven, around $700,000. And who knows what it's gonna be 10 years from now? You know, 10 years from now, it might be $1 million to replace that turf field. And are we gonna raise $1 million through these fees? No. But part of this fee structure is gonna go to defray the cost of replacing a field. And we're giving a number that's now, we don't know what the number's gonna be in 10 or 12 years. And we're realizing that the fee's not gonna raise all of that number, but it's gonna help contribute to that. And then, you know, also, it goes to the concept of security and building security. The reality is, at times now, sometimes we feel like our building security has been lacking because we haven't always required, haven't always required that there be a custodian or a security guard present. And so part of the fees are having that be there. So our, our goal is, our goal as a school district, the reason why we're proposing these changes, to best, do the best we can to maintain our fields and do the best we can to secure our fields. Because we're gonna have a lot of brand-new spaces and some, and some old spaces that we want to maintain as well, that's gonna be available to the public, and we want to do the best we can to support those things. So that's kind of my overall summary. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Brothers. He's probably gonna add, change, redact things in there, if any. And then we can go back and maybe look at some of the questions that were raised about...
Yeah, so that pretty much summed it up. What I'd like to do is I'd like to run through a couple of our just outstanding issues, Scott. You hit on most of them. But just running you through a quick play-by-play of the policy and what went into the thinking behind every section of it. So again, just hit on a couple of issues that we had was, the number one was security. People having badges, getting in and out, and really we want to cut down on that with all of our new facility space. The second one was funding. With a lot of things, I feel like we, we want the brand-new shiny car. We get the brand-new shiny car, but we don't think about the maintenance behind that two years, three years, 10 years, in this case, down the line. And if we don't start budgeting for those things, it's gonna get thrown on us to fund that somewhere, and we don't have that money associated. So...
And, and as a point to that, I don't know if, I think it would be, it would make sense at this point to elaborate. You know, last year, and we talked about the budget in terms of maintenance of the fields, Mr. Schultz and Mrs. Sevintoff made a presentation of what they believe would be an increase in our budget to maintain the current fields, not even the new fields we have. And they were saying, I believe the number was, was 20, looking for an additional $25,000 from the school's budget to maintain our current facilities. And that's not even talking about any of the new things that are coming online. So, you know, there is gonna be a cost incurred by the school district by having all this new field space to maintain them appropriately.
And again, that's what this funding would go to offset. This would go in a revolving account, and that's what we'd use to have capital items that come up that we need to replace. Also, on the turf aspect of it, in talking with the town manager, there's gonna be a 600 to 700, $800,000 cost in 10 to 12 years, depending on the usage of the field. Part of that, we'd like to mitigate through field rental. Obviously, I'm not gonna be able to charge you guys $600 an hour to use the field. That's just unrealistic. And we would never be able to charge you that to come up with the 600 grand that we need to replace the cost. So our thought process on that is looking at local districts, which we'll go over. A survey that we sent out to other local areas and what they charge was to stay consistent with that, put that in a separate revolving fund, and that would go as an offset to the actual cost when time comes to replace it. Again, there, there's a cost associated with these things. And when you build them, we have to start getting that mindset of replacement, and we can't just hit us and be searching for 600 grand. It's just not possible from our budget. I don't even know where we'd look to come up with 600 grand. The other thing is, the fees, as you guys know, have been consistently inconsistent. We want a policy in place that we have that defines the exact fee, and that's what we'd like to move forward with. The insurance piece, one thing we haven't done a great job on either is maintaining a, a insurance cert for liability and for every individual group. That's one thing now, when the change comes of having to book the facility. On school due, we are requiring now, before you guys even get approved from our side, an insurance cert. Some people do it, some people don't. But again, that is a requirement that we need. A lot of people say they fall under the town's umbrella. But realistically, if you're not a school group organization or you don't fall into the rec department, it's your responsibility to have that insurance fee, insurance package, and we need to be listed on that. So going forward, and I, I told the approvers today of the building use, that deny, we will be denying people who do not submit their insurance certificate. That is something we need to have. It gets the school off the liability.
So Brad, let's stay focused on, on this with what we're looking at here, because that's something that kind of has to be... Like, you're talking about a lot of information that should be disseminated properly to everybody as opposed to just a group that's kind of hanging out here in the west. You know what I mean?
Yeah, but I, I'm just, it fits into the policy, though.
Okay.
So it all, it all ties back in.
Okay.
It all ties back in. And one thing Mike mentioned too, Schultz, along with the need for funding, is the field overuse. There's gonna be a need to shut down fields. That's one thing when you're a small district. We don't have very many fields in town that unfortunately, they've taken a beating over the years, and that's led to the condition that a lot of them are in. So we'd like to go on a rotating basis of shutting down fields to let them get up to speed where they need to be.
Guys, that's already scheduled. Do you have a rotation for that already?
We do. It's, it's outlined. Yeah. Yep. Just to hit on, there's nothing much changing on the top page for this, if you go into the proposed policy, Meredith? So the top is the same. The only thing that's changing for proposal on this is... So the top is the same. The only thing that's changing for proposal on this is the overall district building use coordinator would switch from Dave to myself. Priority use of facilities, there was a change there. The thought process behind that is we would make town meetings and elections, number one, based on, we have them well in advance. Again, it's, it was number two on the list prior to. We could certainly look to go back to that, but the thought on this was, we have town meeting and elections well in advance of booking anything for the school, that we could just have that mapped out.
And, and then, and the only thing I'd add on that piece too is, in terms of that change in order, we really just felt that that was establishing what really happens. The reality is, the town elections have been the third Saturday in April for the 25 years I've been in the district. And I don't think they've been on a different day than that. So, we know the town elections are the third Saturday in April, so we're not looking to, the national election is on election day. The school will have elections on election day. And so we just felt like we're really not changing, we're, we're solidifying what really happens. Is that, you know, September 4th was primary day. We had primary elections on September 4th because that's when the state established it. So when those days are selected, we're not going to tell them, this, this school activity is going to bump elections out of the gym. And it's not what the district has ever done. School activity hasn't bumped town elections, statewide elections, national elections, or state or local elections. In terms of town meeting, I think it's been, also been similar. The reality is, town meeting used to be in June, it's moved to April now. But the dates are pretty established generally by September or October. I know we're talking about the town meeting date right now. And, so, so I, we actually didn't view this as a change in the policy. We just viewed it as stating what really happens.
All right, continuing on. Regulations governing the use of school, of school property, really no major change on that. 14 days' notice to use the building, has to be requested. One thing I did highlight was, included in these fees now is the school security officer slash custodian, depending on who we can get. And that's why a lot of these fees you'll see on the weekends, even though we're requesting $30 for the use per hour for the gymnasium. To be honest, I'd love to say we're definitely going to be able to hire a security guard for $12, $13, $14 an hour. But realistically, that may not always be the case if none are available. At that point, we'd have to go to a custodian, and that's $30 an hour for us right there. So, those hours are not, there's no profit being made at all to offset any expenses. Outside of that, no major change in that section. The fee schedule itself, Meredith, if you want to scroll down. These were designed, like Scott mentioned before, the weekday Carver Youth and Recreation, which is the top one right there, top box. These are designed to be cheaper based on the fact that we have a custodian.
Meredith, can you expand that at all, just so people can see the, the prices? See the, the proposed fees? I think that's what they're probably most interested is, what are, what are the actual proposed fees?
Yep. So that right there is the weekday Carver Youth and Rec. What this does is, this would entail for interior building use, such as the gymnasium, this includes your custodian, or if you went down to the weekend, that also includes your security coverage. What this does not include is, on the interior building, is the fee for if you need cleanup after the building. That'd be one recommendation that I'd make to the school community. It's not on this actual policy right now, but that's current practice, is if they felt there was a need for a custodian cleanup, that there's a three-hour minimum for a callback, and that's what we'd like to pass on to the charge, to the groups. Exterior of the building, all the fields, when I originally proposed this last time, and I know this was a, a big point with you guys, is this cost did not include a security person outside for exterior field, field use. So that's the one difference I wanted to make a note of, is that the interior includes a security guard. The exterior did not include any coverage at all. So if there's a, a need that you guys want to have a security guard on hand for all events of the turf and track field, I'd recommend we actually increase that price, because that was not built into this fee structure. Again, can all be talked about, but that's, that was the thought process on that right now. And that would not, this pricing right now does not reflect that being in there for the exterior.
How much is that? 30?
That would be, we could do security, so just say 125 instead of 100. Can you scroll down, Meredith, the next one? Go up a little bit. Right there. That's the pricing for the weekend Carver, you'll see, and that's based on the fact that we do not have a, anyone on schedule to be in the buildings during those times. Can you go to the bottom one? And the bottom one is for all other groups, such as Carver For Profit and anyone outside of Carver that wants to utilize the facilities. One thing I didn't mention before too is, being a new elementary school and all the technology in classrooms and really managing that, we would, we would like to block out areas such as classroom and the library in the elementary and have that, stay focused. If you, people want to rent that, only at the middle high school. Based on controlling, it's easier for us to access that building now with that. And there isn't so much technology in the classrooms that, as much as we'd like to get people in the classrooms, it becomes a tech, and you really need a technology specialist there to handle all the equipment, to make sure nothing goes missing, and all that information. So we'd like to lock those areas out. Anyone can rent that at the Carver Middle High School. One thing that went into these fees is, we did a big survey that Mike Schultz sent out, and it asked six questions, and I believe, Meredith, can you pull that up?
Yeah, there's a link in the survey.
Brad, I'm not clear if, on what Mr. Rosin's question was earlier and what Scott was saying, and you said there was some information on that. I think the big conversation was.
Yeah, so, yeah. When, just looking at this, this budget analysis quick, I didn't look at it honestly too in-depth, but I think you carried in the number for the security. Were you, were you including the whole new cost in addition to?
No, nothing was included. These are the store numbers based on.
This is what they're currently playing in security, which would be rolled into the new fee.
Correct. So when you, when you did your new.
So it would be additional, right?
You would eliminate that off.
Yeah, so if you look at the three divisions of our league, it looks like $18,000 more we have to pay. But if you back out, main security backing out $5,000.
Correct.
So, that's a big question.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, so we wanted to clear that, we wanted to clarify that we would be backing that up.
Yeah, that's huge.
Yep. Yep. The sixth. Meredith, can you read along the side? Can you read those questions that were asked along the sides? Again, these were sent out to multiple school districts.
I, I have the questions right here. So, the questions are, do you allow the public to use the facility during school hours? Now, these questions were a mix. They're more focused towards the new track and field than the overall building use. But they also, so, but those, the questions were, do you allow the public to use the facility during school hours? Do you lock the facility when it's not in use? Do you charge youth groups to use the facility? If so, how much? Does your building use fee come with security or supervision, which we've been talking about? Do you charge additional fees for lighting? What if any problems have you had with additional use beyond the schools? I mean, and the summary is that, and this isn't, obviously, this isn't every community in, in Massachusetts, but the reality is that every community responded to the survey does charge their youth groups to use their facilities. And not only for their football field, for all their spaces. Carver is currently one of the few districts that I know of, actually, I don't know of another, but I'm sure there is, that does not charge to use facilities for the local youth groups. Everybody responded to our survey says that they do. So we're a little bit of an outlier of that right now, so people should be aware of that. That we, we're one of the few communities that do not charge currently. But obviously, we're proposing a policy that would have charges.
And part of that has to do with the fact of the, the newer fields and the newer plan of the upkeep of those fields as well.
And so, it's hard to look at this survey result as a whole. This is also something we could publish, so we could put this on the website. We can make it available to the leader, the leaders of the town organizations that want to see the results of the survey from other towns. You know, and it varies. So in terms of, do you allow the public to use the facility during school hours? There were varied responses. That first question, you can see, Noel, yes. Duxbury, no. Plymouth, yes. EB, no. Hanover, yes. So that's a mixed response. Some towns let you access the facilities during school hours. That's a whole different discussion, right? You know, right now, our, our opinion from a safety and security standpoint of all students is that we would not allow people to access the new football field during school hours. And I, I think in general, people would probably feel comfortable with that, but some communities do. Do you lock the facility when it's not in use? Yes, no. Tennis open, track and turf locked on weekends. All but one. You know, so that really varies too, because that's another, that's another discussion we need to have that really might be outside the actual policy itself, is, on the new track and field, you know, on a Saturday, as a community member, can you go down and walk the track? That's a discuss, without renting the space and gaining its security, you know, you're, I think most of our people here representing, are representing community sports. You know, but if you're a citizen and you want to go walk the track on Saturday afternoon, is it going to be open and available for you to do so? And I think that's a discussion we need to have as a committee as well. And different, and different towns have different views on that, whether they allow that to happen. Some, some towns have said, we built this as a public space. It was sold to the community. Is this a community space? And on the weekend, during the day, you can go down and use the track and use, because, because you're a member of the community. But those, they still charge their youth groups to rent the space. That's different than someone going and running the track on a Saturday afternoon as an individual citizen in Carver.
Which, if, if the track is open, then the field is open.
Correct. But some communities do allow that. There's, we have a varied, we had a varied response to that question. Number two, do you lock the facility when it's not in use? So Meredith, if you want to scroll up on number two, because I know this is, I don't think we're going to make a decision on this tonight, but you can see if you go across, there were varied responses. Noel said yes. Duxbury said no. Plymouth said tennis is open, but track and turf field is locked. EB said all their fields except for one, so they do, they, EB said, actually, they, they lock all their gates except for one, which means I guess you really shouldn't lock any, because they leave one gate open so that you can access the field. No, our turf is a community turf. It's open 20, Hanover, it's open 24 hours a day for anybody who wants to go down on the community turf, because that's how they sold it to their community. Cohasset, no, they, they don't allow access. Plymouth North, yes. So like, we're going to have to make that decision. There wasn't a clear consistency on that response. It seems like town by town, they made an individual choice of, are people going to be able to access that field as community members? But, when you look at the question of, do you charge your youth groups, it's yes across the board. In terms of whether they use those facilities. And I, like I said, I don't know if it'd be valuable to go through this whole survey, but we can certainly make the survey available to people.
We're about halfway through, so you may as well continue.
All right. Does your building use fee come with security or supervision? Question number four. Duxbury was no. Dux, sorry, Noel was no. Duxbury was only with lights. Plymouth was yes. EB was on request. Hanover was no. Cohasset, at minimum, there's a custodial fee. So again, we have a varied responses there, whether they're charging, whether their fee includes security and supervision. We're saying our fee does include security supervision. Mr. Schultz, you did this survey, and you spoke to some people, so I don't know if you want to add information into this.
I'd like to add to, I spoke to Plymouth about what they do, and they have similar issues than we've had over the years in terms of managing building use. And one of the things they're doing now to help offset some of their security and custody requests, they are actually having a course in their training, sort of site managers. So if I was the president of a youth sergeant, and I wanted to assume responsibility of fields that I'm renting, I would go through their training, and I would be sort of a certified site manager. And I would have to be on-site for every night I'm assuming responsibility of that field without a custodial security.
Tynan actually does the same. I know, I live in the, the community of Tynan, and I'm involved in youth sports in Tynan and coach youth teams in Tynan. Tynan has the same policy for their building use. They do charge the youth sports. They do have, they actually have a fee called the site director fee, which you can either pay the fee or someone from your program can be trained as a site director. It's the same, same concept, which we, is not necessarily a concept we're proposing, but. Right. Their responsibility is to be the person on-site for any event that occurred. Do you charge additional fee for lights? I know lights came up as a question. And going, we can go across our survey. Yes in Noel. Duxbury is $40 an hour. Plymouth, yes. EB, no. There is no fee for lights. They are set to come on at dusk and shut off at 9:30 in Hanover. Cohasset, yes. So Hanover, they're on every night, because it's a community field. You can go there 24 hours a day. Plymouth North was yes, $75 an hour. Abington was no. Again, varied responses there in terms of whether people are charging an additional fee for the lights on the field.
So that's $75 an hour just for the lights?
Lights, that's beyond what they're charging for the field. So those fees are what they're charging beyond the field fee. And then what, what if any problems have you had additional to beyond school use? And, and actually, I think what's even more important for people to see is, if we make, if we put this on the website, if you want to go take a look at it, if you see there's a link down the bottom, so Noel at the, below number six, Meredith, what I highlighted, says policy. We actually have a link to Noel's building use policy. We have, we don't have all of them, but, but, but several, several of the districts there, we actually have their building use policy, which you could link to and take a look at. And, you know, this, this policy we created, you know, really came from looking at other people's policies. We didn't, we didn't reinvent the wheel here. We went back and said, what are, what are area communities doing around us? We looked at some of those policies. Our real model, I believe, was actually Abington. So our structure in terms of this policy is very similar to Abington. So if you pull up Abington, you'll see a very similar, because we thought it matched with what we were looking to do. So all, we can make that, all that information available to the public to take a look at and to, to review those things. Mr. Schultz, if we could just have, I guess I ask you to come to the mic, because we are on TV.
So, the last question for me, sorry, I was over the mic. Hello, hello, testing. The last question for me was, was the one that sort of brings some frustration as people that receive the building use after the group uses it. So, there is a bunch of athletic directors that I polled for this that wake up on a Monday morning and experience the same thing that I experienced. And if you go across the board, ultimately, and I, and I'm not, I'm not necessarily blaming anybody in this room, because the people in this room are here because they care and that they're, they're trying to provide an opportunity for the kids in town. So I appreciate that. There is a concern when you have building use that people are not taking good care of what they're using. And that's our concern when we start opening these new facilities. And I know that everybody in this room, I've spoken to you before on a Monday morning, we've talked about how you've gone around and picked up trash, and you've picked up papers, and you've closed gates, and all the things you're doing. Unfortunately, there, there is some overall misuse of the space when we rent it out. And, and just looking at that list, I mean, the consistent poll on question six is trash. Nobody following a schedule, supervision, you know, things being damaged, kids hanging on nets, hanging on posts, not putting things away, school board's broken. I mean, the, it's a continual list of, of, some of it's general wear and tear, some of it's misuse, and some of it are things that we, as people sitting here, we can't police 300 people on a facility by ourselves. And the thing that I'm always talking with the, the youth organizers, the, the board members, is that they do their very best to try to manage their site. But I'll give you an example, and I keep going back to this example, because it was a lot. It was spring of this year. There was an MIAA softball tournament game at our facility. We had what appeared to be the flag football playoffs. There had to be, and some of you in this room were there, there had to have been 500 people at that site. There were cars everywhere. There were people everywhere. The next morning, on that Monday morning, it was a lot of work for the groundskeeper to sort of put the pieces back together. And that's kind of what we're talking about. We're talking about how to properly manage these new facilities and these new sites, and how to properly supervise. I mean, parking of cars. People, when you start having 500 people at a facility, they're going to park where they want. They're going to park on the grass. They're going to throw trash where they want. They're going to leave their clothes behind. The kids are going to hang on the baskets at the basketball court. It's, it's an almost impossible thing to manage that number of people. So that, and that's an ongoing concern at every facility, and that's why we sort of did this survey, is to let people know that we're not planning to make a lot of money by charging fees. We're just trying to manage what we have and provide a facility that people are proud of. We're just trying to manage what we have and provide a facility that people are proud of. And I think that sometimes, when we overuse it, it, it's hard. We, we took a beating last fall, this spring, with the facility and people's opinion of the facility. And I think we need to do a better job managing our building use and, and, and the wear and tear of our facility. The only other thing I will add is that I've had youth groups from other towns call us recently, because our, we don't, our fees are so low. So, youth basketball from other towns have tried to come to our facility and rent our facility, because our facility is so low. And I ask them why they're not in their town, and they say, because I'm paying a hundred bucks an hour for our facility. So, um, the intent of this, and I think we've worked quite a bit on it, is not to shock people and not to make it so it's impossible for our youth programs to operate in town. It's really about sort of a common ground, I think, with kind of these things in, in mind.
Thank you.
Sorry, that was a lot, but.
No, that's alright, thank you. So, does anyone have any questions?
And the other thing, I, I'd like to go, I made, took some notes through the public comment period, and want to make sure that we addressed all those issues, maybe we have and we haven't, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go through that, if that's alright.
Yeah, that's fine, man. I, I just want to make sure everybody in this committee gets a chance to.
Yeah, and they'll have the chance, that.
Ask the question.
Is that, so is everyone okay if I go through that list and see if I missed anything? So, we had a question about town elections and town meetings. And my response to that was, I, the reason for that change was this, we actually believe that that's actually current practice. So, it wasn't, we didn't view this actually as a change in the policy. Though, you know, obviously it is in terms of the other one that was flipped, we just felt like it was current practice. I don't know if we addressed the concerns of the rec committee, I think the concern of the rec committee was, kind of, where do we stand? Are we a town organization that's not like a youth sports organization, and is the rec, is the rec committee going to be charged to run a, you know, so the last couple of years, rec has done culinary with Chef Porter Lance, one of our teachers, and they run a culinary class for kids for a few weeks. You know, are we going to be charging them to have one of our teachers run a rec program, a culinary rec program? And I don't think we really addressed that question, I don't know if we have an answer to that question tonight, under the policy. So, and I think that was where the question is, where does, where does rec, where does rec stand? What, what is, what is rec? People had questions about not having access to the policy, so I think we'll put, my plan is to put the policy on the website, we'll put the survey on the website with the links. We'll put it on the school committee page, so if you go to cover.org, school committee, under that school committee page, we'll have links to the new policy with the fee structure. We'll have links to the survey, and the survey obviously contains the links to the other policies, so people can take a look at that over the next couple of weeks.
With sincere clarity that this is not the policy, this is the policy proposal.
Proposed, the proposed policy, yep. We had a question about security included, which I think we addressed, that it is. Uh, we had a question about the fee structure beginning at this time. I was going to put it out to the committee, I think something for the, for the committee to consider is that, you know, we actually, even if the policy was, say this policy went forward as stated, that maybe there'd be a consideration of a timeframe for establishment of the policy instead of.
Immediate.
Immediate, you know, that could be a consideration of the fees would take place in the next school year, so that everybody will have appropriate time to plan for that. It's something clearly, you know, we could consider. I talked about distributing the, the fee to the league presidents, just against everybody who was aware of it. And I think the only other issue came up was the lights on the football field, which I, what I took from that question was, that's, it's going to be expensive if Cover Football, Cover Football doesn't have any place with lights. The place that would have lights would be the turf field, but based on what we're proposing as a fee, that would be pretty expensive for Cover Football to take on. I'm taking that was the gist of the question. And, yeah, I, I don't, I, so that's what I took as the gist of the question. So, you know, I think that's just an issue for us to consider in terms of, of that, that cost. And I don't know if, Andrew, I know you took some notes, and Brad, you took some notes, I don't know if I missed a piece, or, that was kind of my summary of the public comments from, from earlier, earlier on.
Mr. Salazar had mentioned about scheduling, and it would be on a first come, first served basis, and we kind of went into that, I wanted to make sure that there was clarity for you, that that had been taken care of. That was one I had written down.
Okay.
It's just the same application process, still through school, dude.
I just wanted to make sure that he got it. And then, I guess I, I'm going to ask some questions based on, they should be pretty, pretty easy ones, Brad, but they'll be based on things that maybe people are thinking, okay? So, if, if I'm a group and I've been paying, paying a fee, and, you know, I was, in my opinion, maybe getting substandard for what I was paying, the feeling would be from anyone is, well, what am I going to get now? Right? So the belief is that we're going to, those people are going to be renting a space, so they'd show up, their field should be green, should be cut. Would not be lined, Brad, if I'm wrong about any of this, you guys just correct me, would not be lined, so that they would be lining it themselves, they'd be moving nets or anything like that. But, the standard of what they've been playing on, which was unacceptable, will be the reason as to what we're trying to build on with these fees.
To be honest with you, we, we want to handle, even if this doesn't pass, we need to improve what we've been doing. Which is what we're trying to do anyway. These, this fee structure, honestly, is, if you, if you break out, take out the expense for the turf field, it's trying to grow money into the twenty-five thousand we don't have to, um, maintain the facilities as is, for the irriga, not irrigation, but for fertilization, the yearly maintenance that that needs. In addition to that, there, Mike can give me a list of a hundred thousand dollars tomorrow of expenses that we need, that we do not have covered in our budget. And again, it comes back to, it, something in our budget would have to change to make that a priority. And you guys know our budget better than anyone else, there's nowhere to find that money right now. So, we've never actually kept up with true maintenance plan of replacing hoops, replacing things that need to be done, that this is where that pot of money would sit, and that's what we'd be able to utilize for fixes as they came up. Right. Again, I'd like to sit here and say too, that we're going to generate forty thousand dollars every year, but we have done a bad job documenting, I think, how many hours are actually being used, because we've given out cards that are kind of utilized as they go. Some people book, I'm not going to say it's across the board for everyone, but to get on to say I have an exact number of what people are going to use it for, and what the revenue we're going to generate is, I don't have that today. And I can't, because past practices, we've done not a very good job of documenting the actual use.
Another thing would possibly be accountability. So, going forward, um, is this something that is going to fall on you, the accountability? Where does it go?
You mean liability?
Uh, no, accountability. The accountability to know that, alright, I know that if I book with the AD at the high school, then I'm good, I'm good to go, I've done what I'm supposed to do. But, let's say that you show up and it's double booked, or, is there accountability? What's the, what's the, the line? Who, who is the, who are the people that would be held accountable?
Same thing on both ends, I mean, once the space is booked, the space is booked.
That wasn't an example, but who are the three? Like, if you are, if Mr. Rosen, for instance, is looking to book something at the elementary school, that would be through Mrs. Foley?
Correct.
Okay?
No change.
So, anything through, the high school would be through Mr. Schultz?
And Ashley. Mike would be for more sports, Ashley's more, Mike, you can answer the question if you want, Ash is more for interior building.
Non, building use is non, non athletics, so Asher Doyle would be non athletics.
Something I would want.
Honestly, accountability, it's on our end, once that, once the requestor submits, it, it's on the school's end to take care of it. Whether it's accepting or denying it, that's really where it falls on us to make sure that process goes through.
Yep, no, I, I mean, we, we debate this all the time. I, I get, I'm just trying to speak from the other side, just so that they're making sure that.
And I agree with you, and I, I think what he's really saying is that, that, that part, that piece, maybe not the specific name, like Ms. Foley or Ashley, but the position that's responsible for making sure that that is done, should be more publicly known that way, I think, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, because there will be a standard, that I think that we're instantaneously in this town going from just deal with it type of attitude, to, we've got nice stuff now. So now, we, we have a standard that we have to quickly get up to. And that's what we're doing, we're trying.
I guess at the other end too, though.
So that brings accountability.
We need to make the interpretation of that, if it's, if, we try to maintain things in season. So if you were to go now to our baseball field or our softball field, they're overgrown. They're overgrown, because the groundskeepers scheduled trying to keep up with what's scheduled in town on our current fields being used. So to say that you're going to get a pristine baseball field tomorrow, if you want to rent it, it's not realistic. So that comes back to us, that we may deny people. We may say that we cannot provide this for you. That if that's the case, we're not charging them, and we're, we're not allowing them on the field. So, Mike, I don't know if you want to add on to that, but.
So, uh, I want to just add a part that, that where it gets confusing and foggy for us, and it's something that I've worked with the board members, um, for multiple years. But what, what happens a lot, um, and anybody in the room that's a board member can justify or, or speak to this, but I typically like in, to deal with the board members or the presidents, and I've got to know, gotten to know most of them and who they are. So, they would put a request in, it's, there's a history here, but basically, they would put a request in for a space or for a block of time for their group. So for example, Alan would put in five to seven, Monday through Friday, for Pond Street Soccer Field, okay? And he'd go through school, dude, there'd be a process, there's the accountability piece, right? We would sign off on it, we'd be okay for him to do it, and they'd be fine. What, what then happens is somebody within his group doesn't necessarily like the block of time they got, and they'll then put another request in. I don't know who the person is, they just kind of put Plymouth Use, I mean, Cover Use Soccer, this is my request, whatever. So now I've got multiple requests for the same space, it gets confusing. So we've worked out this, a lot of times, we've talked about this and said, we're not going to take any requests, and John Rosen, you can speak to this as well. I can't take requests from anybody other than board members, because it gets very confusing. There's an accountability piece where then we spend the day trying to figure out who so-and-so is, because I don't have them as a list of somebody I'm approving from. So in terms of the building use at the high school level, it gets very confusing. It is Ashley who's managing it, and I'm going to support her. When somebody calls and requests the auditorium, it's really simple. It's the auditorium, it's a separate fee, it's very simple. But when they start requesting a space that's been double booked, and it turns out that the person requesting it is also a member of the same group that's already requesting it, there, there becomes some confusion there.
But that ties back into the insurance cert.
Right, so.
Insurance cert, it'll have whose board they're covering all on there, and that's why it needs to be a requirement as well.
Right, and we're working, and again, I've probably told Emily Slavin four different ways we're requesting spaces right now, because we're working through this program, and we're going to have to have a meeting to sort it out, and I've told some of the, the youth group. But ultimately, we're trying to make the process simple, but I think that the, the youth groups in town are also trying to manage their coaches and saying, listen, you can't reach out to Mike separately and say, can I get this space for an hour, because I don't really like where I am? The other thing is, is that we are going to be shutting fields down, and I'm trying to get Emily involved in, in, in sort of requesting spaces, because some groups aren't going to like what we have to offer them in the future. So if there's a space that you've traditionally had, and we're shutting it down to repair it, you're going to be given something else that maybe Emily has at a different field. So, there's sort of some understanding as to where we are in, in trying to recycle these fields. So, accountability wise, I, I'll go back to what Brad said. We're not currently, as a school, as an athletic program, we're not currently in spring baseball or softball season. So I'll be the first to tell you, those fields aren't pristine right now, because it's not a top priority of ours right now. We don't have the manpower to have, uh, the, the groundskeeper on those fields, turning them over, weeding them, edging the lines, because he's busy lining three other fields. So when, when, when the youth softball is requesting a space right now, yeah, we have a space, it's, schedule-wise, it's open, but it's not going to be in spring sports-ready format, unless we're willing to pay that person the overtime to manage that space. So that's kind of where we, we struggle with, and I call it out of season, but it's, it's out of season for us. It's not out of season for them, but it, sometimes it's out of season for us. I don't know if that answered the question.
And that's going to become a staffing issue that we're going to have to address through the town, because all, ultimately, the reality is, we're bringing in, we're bringing online two brand-new softball fields, two new soccer fields at the elementary school, that right now, someone needs to maintain. And ultimately, the district's one groundskeeper cannot maintain all these fields by themselves, and that's a staffing issue we're going to have to address through the town.
And my, my last one was, thank you very much for the survey, because at last meeting, I asked for that, that was great, um, appreciate it. One thing I would like for the next one, I'm very intrigued by the site manager.
There's another one?
Yeah, there's going to be another one.
Oh, okay.
So, the site manager, because I think that, that might be able to fill.
A model of how it works?
Yeah, I want some clarity on how it works, I want some clarity on how long people need to get.
You mean the certifying, uh, okay.
Certified would be the word, yes, the word I was looking for, to be certified to be able to do it, because I feel like that could fill some gaps. Obviously not on a random Wednesday night to have a, a site manager at a practice, but it might be something, if you had three of them over an eight-hour period on a Saturday, you could space some things out, could, could provide some relief, so.
Yeah, the, the only problem I see with that, and I, I will get some more information, I don't know how many schools are doing it, I mean, Tynan's doing it, I know Plymouth's doing it, so there's two buildings there. The only problem I have with that is, is, you know, you're asking a lot of, of a board member, if it's one person, to stay on site for eight to ten to twelve-hour shift. My concern would be passing of badges, passing of credentials, and then opening the building and sort of passing the baton. So, you might have to have multiple people per organization.
That is the other concerns, we've been, I think, as a committee, we've really talked about the fact that the reality is, especially with the elementary school and the middle high school, we're not going to be giving people who are not employees of the school district, keys and badges to the buildings.
There are a handful of people in, in the community that we obviously trust as board members of youth programs that do have access to our buildings. And that's something that the, the school committee has to decide if that's how they want to move forward or not with.
So I think to your statement too, Andrew, that you're talking about creating more bodies, but not necessarily changing any kind of fee structure with what you're doing anyway, right?
Well, that would offset them, uh, the custodial fees, correct?
I'd have to get more information on how Plymouth and Tynan do it.
Right, isn't that what they do it?
Yes, they say you, we will not charge you a custodial fee or a security fee, to my knowledge.
And I'm just looking at the longer periods of time.
That person is pro bono? They're working for free?
Apparently, I guess, unless, unless their individual organization sort of.
Pays them.
Pays for them in some way. I mean, really, the security, again, history really quickly, the security came about long before I was here. And it was designed, and maybe people in this room would know better than I, it was designed to offset the cost of the custodian. So, the only other person in the building that could open the building and let a group in, like youth basketball, was a custodian they were paying overtime for. So they come up with the idea of security, and the reason why the security, I think, is valuable, and I think it's valuable outside, or a site manager, is somebody has to police what goes on outside the building. And I'm not saying that there's groups, because there's groups here that do it, they pick up trash and they walk around the facility, but, um, the, the intent of the security position was to make sure that when you open the building, it gets locked properly, the windows get shut, no one's in classrooms. I mean, I do get a lot of calls on a Monday morning from teachers saying, somebody was in my classroom, they wrote on my board, they went through my desk, I mean, it is upsetting when that happens. The other piece that I don't, don't know about, and maybe Brad or Scott, is the custodians have rights to the overtime in the building for cleaning the facility, and I don't know the answer to that. So is there always still going to be a custodial fee tacked on when you're using bathrooms and spaces? That's something I don't know about.
Mike, you asked for maybe a little bit of comment, I'll make it real quick. What we've traditionally done, and this has been over the last fifteen years that I've been here, we have a security guard on site at all times, the weekend, from a half hour before the first game to a half hour after Woodsland, at Canyon Day, Rooney, Danny Tom, Dan, they're great. They do help with the maintenance of the building, I think, because they'll bring, stay in the gym, they, they lock all the doors, and they're really, really good. And we get a lot of bang for our buck with them, they're eleven, twelve dollars an hour. The fee that I showed on that worksheet for all of you was basically a callback fee, gave signal, traditional call, a maintenance person at the end of the weekend when we're all done, minimum of three hours. But it was at an overtime rate, it's always thirty, thirty-five bucks an hour, and that's where our four thousand dollars a year comes from maintenance. It's all callback overtime fees at the end of the weekend, and that's how we traditionally have done it.
And the only I would say to that is, I, I think that when the custodians leave on a Friday night, they have done their sweep of the building, so they've swept the floor, they've swept the cafeteria, they've cleaned the bathrooms. When we enter the building on a Monday, that's how we're receiving it. If somebody was to use the facility over the weekend, and the floor of the gym is dirty, and the bathrooms are dirty and everything else, there is an extra shift and an extra process in cleaning that. So I, I understand the fee for that, or someone has to do that to get it ready for the school day.
And the only distinction, using that very specific example, the proposed policy is, it would be thirty dollars an hour for the gym, but that would include the security fee on the weekend. So, it would, yes, it would be more than you're currently paying, but if you're currently paying twelve dollars for a security guard, right? And plus, the overtime at the end, it would be, you know, so it would be seventeen dollars more an hour than you're currently paying.
As a current fee structure, or the current proposed shape. But otherwise, it would operate the same way that you just described.
Stephanie?
Clearly, we have a lot more discussions to have before we go on this, but I.
Um, clearly, we have a lot more discussions to have before we go on this, but I thi, I think everyone that came, um, to give their feedback, they'll ask questions, um, to make us aware of this, 'cause we, we all, you know, um, asked for feedback, and we appreciate, I just want to say that I appreciate all of you being here and spending your time to, um, make your concerns heard, and we heard you, we have them, you know, some of our own, and we'll continue to, to work towards it.
Um, I first want to say, uh, thank you for, Mr. Rosen, for, uh, getting this impact study out to us, I really appreciate that. It really, uh, kind of gives us a, a real idea of what you go through, you know, and what you have to put out. Um, if the other cover sports, uh, youth groups could possibly do something like this as well before our next meetings, we could see what, how it would impact you as well, that'd be hel, really helpful, I think. Um, I'm conflicted here, because I know we have new facilities coming up and a beautiful new field, and we have to take care of them, because, um, you know, it's gonna come a time in 10 years or 12 years, it's gonna go by quickly, and we're gonna have to come up with almost a, you know, six hundred, six hundred thousand to a million dollars to resurface a field that we don't have the money for. So, but on the, on the other hand, families in cover, there's not a lot of things to do for kids to do, okay? And so, if this, I'd be against it, be, pricing kids out from participating. All right, so, you're kind of, I'm, I'm kind of conflicted here, so the more information we get, the better. But, uh, all of our, and I can speak for myself, and I'm sure everybody else, this will be carefully considered for, for sure, so I just want to let you know that.
So, I'll just conclude with, we're, we're not gonna have any secret meetings about this, so the next time we talk about it, it's gonna be a public session, when you're very welcome to be here, and hopefully do. Um, I would say the rec issue is a different issue we need to address, it's a little bit deeper than what we've talked about so far. But I would say to John's point, you kind of see the place we're in through this conversation, I hope, a little bit tonight, because as members of this town, we have all built this. We had a track that kids couldn't even run on, we couldn't bring teams in. Now, we got a brand-new track, we got a turf field, we got a brand-new basketball court. We got all these things that this town has invested millions of dollars in, and they've entrusted us with making sure that we create the best plan to take care of those and make that money last. So, that is our ultimate goal, but to your point, John, we're on a time crunch here, 'cause you guys are moving. So, we've gotta get these policies in place, we don't have forever to get these in place. People are gonna want to start using these fields, and we've got a bunch of new fields coming in, and we want to make sure as a committee that we get your input so that we can create the best thing for this community, not something that's not gonna work, that we're gonna have to change again in another, another year or two. We want the best plan that's gonna work, and clearly, it's gonna cost money, everything we're doing does. So, we just figure out, have to figure out how to do that in the best possible way that addresses the most needs that we can. So, we hope that some of the information out on the website can be helpful, um, and that when we meet again next month, that you could be back with either more information or, or any other input that you want to add when we come to make a decision, because we do have to make a decision about this, and we have to get to a point where we can start moving forward. And I think it'll be beneficial to everybody to do that. So, I would also like to thank everybody for coming in and putting your input in.
Thank you.
Because the more that we get, the, the better decision we're gonna make in the end run. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, we go to field trips.
Field trips, we have, uh, three field trips, uh, grade 11 to Salem, Mass. in Salem, New Hampshire for October 5th. Um, a grade nine through 12 Europe trip in 2020. I just want to get the advance word out there, approval from the school committee, because of those trips, in terms of their expense, uh, they just try to do as much forward planning as possible, uh, to try to get people involved...
Sure.
...in those trips, and obviously, before they move forward, they need school committee approval. Uh, and then, Best Buddies actually participating in Walk in Pawtucket coming up, uh, that one is soon, actually, I gotta look at the date on that one. Uh, that one is for October 13th. Um, so obviously, we can take them all individually, uh, if you want to group them, you can group them. If you want to talk about each one individually, that's fine as well.
Make a motion to accept the, uh, two field trips, grade 11 Salem, Mass. and Salem, New Hampshire, October 5th, 2018, also the grade nine through 12 Europe 2020 trip.
Second.
Motion made in second, any questions on those two at all? Nope, clearly, I understand.